Good evening, welcome to the Wednesday, February 10th, 2021, School Committee Meeting. I call this meeting to order, we'll start with introductions to my left.
Natalie Barrow, Student Representative.
Robert Mullin.
Good evening, Mark Branko, Assistant Superintendent.
Hi, Mike Flanagan, Superintendent.
Brian McMahon.
Becky Stanton.
Anthony Tannenbaum.
Jeff Boe.
Joe Messina, Business Administrator.
And via Zoom, we have Mike Moran and...
Hi, good evening, Mike Moran.
And we're expecting Julie Justucci to join us shortly via Zoom also. Please rise, we'll pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will seek a motion to approve the minutes from January 26, 2021, School Committee Meeting, and the January 26, 2021 Capital Asset Subcommittee Minutes.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Discussion, those in favor? I apologize, since we have a Zoom member, we need to roll call votes. Mr. Mullin?
In favor.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor.
Mr. Moran?
In favor.
Julie's not with us yet? They carry 600.
Can you talk closer to the microphone?
Yep. It's this thing, just yell at it.
Speaker, either one.
No correspondence?
None at this time, Mr. Chair.
Visitors comments and questions?
I'll make the motion.
I don't believe we have any. We'll move on. Share the success, Natalie?
At TES, the 2021 to 2022 kindergarten registration has begun. To ensure the health and safety of the families and staff, they are holding a no-contact registration process. Families should drop off completed registration documents to the main lobby vestibule. Registration paperwork should be dropped off now through Friday, February 19th, between 9:00 to 6:00 p.m. All of the necessary paperwork can be found on their website. At TMS, they continue to incorporate new and exciting clubs. These clubs include the Knowledge Bowl, Yearbook, Baking, Tetris, and Rubik's Cube Club. They have also begun planning some March and May activities for the entire student population, and there was even a small group meeting on Monday to discuss the possibilities. Several staff members, parents, administrators, and students have all been a part of the Middle School Building Learning Committee to help set the vision for the potential middle school. There have been five workshops and a faculty meeting to help pull the ideas together to match their visit, vision, and create a building that will meet the needs of their students as they navigate the ever-changing world they are preparing their students for. On Thursday, there is a Community Information Night for anyone who is interested, starting at 6:00 p.m., and information on this is on social media and has been emailed out to all of the parents. A THS Student Council is holding their Have a Heart Food Drive, where students can bring in non-perishable food items or monetary donations for a local food shelter, and an exchange can receive a Valentine's Day treat or enter a raffle for a chance to win a parking spot in the teacher's parking lot. The junior class is also holding a fundraiser, which is the Valentine's Day Raffle Fundraiser. This fundraiser will be open until Friday, February 12th. In order to enter, students and teachers can buy tickets during lunches, or you can DM the Class of 2022's Instagram page in order to enter virtually through Venmo. The Venmo account is @LilyWagner14, and there will be pod playoffs for the boys and girls' basketball teams next week, so good luck, boys and girls' basketball. And Tinsborough Girls Gymnastics Team has begun their season with an impressive start with a record of four wins and one loss. They have defeated North Andover twice, Andover, and Methuen. Caitlin DePersio, Katie Serrano, and June Hulley are team members for the Tinsborough team, who have provided incredible routines on floor, beam, bars, and vault. Their routines amaze and impress all who are able to watch them. Congrats, and we wish you all the success. And finally, Mr. Ogden would like everyone to have a safe and relaxing February break.
Thank you, Natalie. Subcommittee update, policy, Dr. Branko?
Can I defer to you?
Sure. So, the Policy Subcommittee met earlier tonight. We have a series of policies we will be asking for motions on later on. Good evening. Personnel, request for maternity leave, Andrea Triakis, TMS teacher, due June 2021. Congratulations, Andrea. And notification of new hire, Barbara Zimmerman, TMS THS 1.0 school nurse. Welcome, Barbara. Unfinished business, technology update?
So, Mr. Chair, the committee had requested a few meetings back to have Mr. Piper come and do kind of an update. I know it's been a very hectic year, and we certainly infused a lot of new technology into the district, so I think it's great that we have Mr. Piper here to talk about some of our challenges, some of our opportunities, and kind of where we're going moving ahead. So, Mr. Piper, I have a couple slides prepared for you, and he's certainly happy to answer any questions at the end.
Thank you, thank you for having me. In the past year, schools, including our very own, have been the target of cyber attacks, and it's been on the rise. It's tripled, I think, this year, prior to last year, and last year was double from the year before, so it's on an exponential increase. So I thought tonight would be good to just kind of give you a brief update, a very high-level explanation about what some of these attacks are, and then how we at the Tinsborough are dealing with those, and how we continue to really focus on that. It's been a big focus of our year so far this year, as you know from the events back in the fall. The slide here is from POSIN, which is the Consortium for School Networking, and they identified the top five cybersecurity threats for schools. First one is phishing, which is basically usually in the form of an email. It's either from a company, we've heard about this a lot on the news, or it could be, it could look like it's from someone you trust. So in your handout tonight, I gave you an example, a real-life example, of a phishing scheme that happened here within our staff, and it's actually happened about three times, all the same similar initial email. But you'll see here, of course, I took the names out of the innocent parties, you'll see here that there was actually some back and forth, because it really looked like it came from a principal in one of our schools. The employee, you know, wanted to be a good employee, of course, and started going back and forth with the spammer, and you'll see at the bottom of that how it ended up good, but it could have ended up really bad for that employee, and she could have lost out on a good chunk of money. We've had that a few times at this school, and we'll talk more about how we can combat phishing a little bit later. DDoS, I think you guys have all heard that word once or twice this year. That's something that affected us back in October, November, and it's actually affected a lot of schools this year, Massachusetts and countrywide. So, DDoS is a distributed denial of service. There's really no way to prevent it, there's only ways to mitigate it, which again, at the end, I'm just going to kind of explain what these are, and at the end, we'll kind of talk about how we're mitigating the risk of all of this. Like I said, a good example of DDoS is October 2020 at Tinsborough High School. Data breach is the third one that they've identified, and that's really the intentional or unintentional release of confidential information. So it could be as simple as someone sending medical data via email to someone who really shouldn't have access to that data, or it could be something malicious, such as an employee leaving on bad terms, that downloads every staff member's address and publishes them for some reason. That's more of a school examples. Of course, in the real world, you hear about data breaches within companies and social security numbers being stolen, and credit cards. Lucky, luckily for us, we don't keep any of that type of information, such as credit cards and social security numbers. Ransomware, I know Mr. Mullin had talked about this, maybe it was this year, maybe it was last year, schools have really been hit with this a lot as well. So ransomware is where malicious software will come into a system of the school, whether it's the student information system, if a school has a financial system, and it'll basically encrypt the system and ask for a ransom to be paid in order to get that data restored. So rendering basically that server and that information lost, and hopefully have backups. Usually, they ask for it in cryptocurrency, because it's untrapable. That's ransomware at a high level. IOT vulnerabilities also affect us. IOT stands for Internet of Things, and you can think of that as anything that's on the internet, that's not really a computer, such as a laptop or a desktop. It's things like Apple TVs, smartwatches, Fitbits, Google Chromes, Chromecast, all of those different things. Could be even printers, it could be Ring doorbells, it could be our security cameras. So all of those items that are on our network, on the internet, are basically hackable. A lot of times, they come with passwords for whoever owns them to get in and do things, and a lot of times, people don't change the default password. So that's another area of concern for not only schools, but all of us as well. So if you want to go to slide two, please, Mark. So in terms of mitigation, some of these, like I said, affect us more than others. We know that DDoS affected us really heavily this year. It took us down. What we did to mitigate that is, again, there's really no way to stop DDoS, because it's from outside, and it's really untrapable. You can only mitigate it. So we partnered with Comcast. On this slide, these are five partners who we've really worked closely with so far this year. Comcast is now our DDoS mitigation site, so all traffic as it comes in, if they determine that they're seeing patterns of malicious activity, it'll then filter through Comcast and will keep us up and running. So they've been huge, and we're looking to do that also at the elementary school, put in a DDoS solution over there to mitigate any risk of that. Northeast Technologies is a company that we also partnered with. They're helping us develop more plans for the future, more based on our servers, our infrastructure, our switches, our Wi-Fi, helping us really look at where we need to be now and also in the future. Palo Alto Networks is our firewall vendor, and firewalls are key, and we're going to talk about that in a second. They've really helped us all the way from when we had our attacks in October, all the way to today, where we're on the phone to them constantly. And the firewall, again, is that brick wall, if you will, that tracks all the traffic and keeps out the bad stuff, and lets the good stuff in and out. Now, the top two, the MSISAC, which is a big, long word, I always have to look up what that stands for. It is the Multi-State Information Sharing and Analysis Center, and they're a kind of sub org of that Center for Internet Security. So they work with towns and states and now K-12 school districts on cybersecurity, that's their main focus. And we were appointed to them, again, back in October, and we joined these organizations as members for free, the Tinsborough Public Schools, and they just are a wealth of knowledge on cybersecurity. They have a 24/7/365 hotline we can reach out to with any questions. If we have any attacks, we can reach out to them, and they help us with that. They also work with the law enforcement to, if there's any cyber attacks. As well, they have a ton of resources on their site, we get updates daily about vulnerabilities. Just this week, we had a whole briefing about vulnerabilities in the new Apple update, Chrome browser, you name it. Every day, we're getting things in. So what do we do with all that information? So there's really three, we determined three main buckets to help mitigate this stuff. The first one is the right technology, and that's important from a budgeting standpoint as well as, you know, hardware standpoint. So DDoS mitigation, I already talked about that. Robust firewalls, I talked about that a little bit with Palo Alto, also due for a new firewall at the elementary school. You know, we're looking to go with Palo Alto or something similar there. Just on the flip side of your handout, that's kind of a little report from a firewall, firewall here at the high school, and it probably might not mean much to you, but you'll see that those are some of the very critical threats that the firewall blocked in the last few days, with some pretty scary descriptions of what they might do. And those were threats that were trying to go against our Power School servers that are being blocked. So firewalls, I can't stress enough how important it is to make sure we have the right-sized firewall, the robustness of the firewall, and a firewall that can handle the threats that are coming in every day. And then lastly, for the right technology, it's the network itself. You know, what are we doing in terms of separating the network so that students, you know, can't get to things that they shouldn't get to, staff can't get to things that they shouldn't get to, segmenting the network that way. Second bucket that we've identified is internal controls and procedures. Not as fancy as hardware, but it's still very important. You know, we've been looking really hard and starting to look hard at who has access to what data here. We've always done this, but I think this year's really brought it up a notch on the sensitivity of our controls. Cloud-based systems, you know, again, we're in a good place that most of our systems are in the cloud, and we also have disaster recovery in place with our student information system. So if anything happened to it, we're contracted with them, they'll get it up and running within, I think, two hours on a separate server out at Amazon. So we have a lot of those things already in place, and still things that we're definitely looking at, disaster recovery plans, password rules and complexities, how often are we having users change their passwords, you know, are we making sure they're complex? Things that, you know, it's like living in the country, and then the country doesn't become the country anymore, and you have to kind of fortify your house a little better. So we're looking at all that stuff, and it's going to be never-ending, to be honest with you, and it's good stuff. And then the third bucket is education and training. Sort of goes along with the policies and the controls, but what are we doing to help our users, both staff, students, and even families, to be secure online? How to spot phishing such as this, so that someone isn't going out to the store and purchasing things just because they got an email asking them to do that? And best practices, we're working with sensitive data. And again, a lot of this is not malicious stuff, it's just sometimes, oh, I didn't know I shouldn't be sending that medical data, you know, through email over here, you know, maybe we should password protect, stuff like that. So it's all that that we're looking at. And I thought it was important tonight to share that, really, just to let you know, there's all this stuff happening behind the scenes to make sure that, knock on wood, something like October, you know, doesn't happen again, because it was not a good time for anyone. So I'm open to any questions you have, I wanted to keep this brief and short tonight. Would love to dive into details on cybersecurity at another point if you want, because I think it's important, and it's pretty cool to talk about.
Thanks, Derek, great job. Back in October, the biggest issues we were facing was the DDoS attacks, correct? I know we moved to Comcast and their protection. How many DDoS attacks have we had since we've implemented the Comcast solution, and how effective has that solution been?
So, there's a couple different types of denial-of-service attacks. So straight-up DDoS attacks, where they come from all different countries, all at the same time. Those are the ones that get fully mitigated by Comcast. I think we've had three really big ones since then, but we probably have at least, it slowed down a little bit the last few weeks, but we were getting about sometimes two, three a day, where they weren't necessarily DDoS attacks, but they were sort of denial-of-service attacks, where Comcast looked at our data, our traffic that was coming in, and realized that, you know, they keep statistics over time. So they were realizing that, okay, you usually have this type of traffic coming in during these hours, all of a sudden, we noticed that this huge spike happened. So they actually started, they don't call it mitigation at that point, but they started looking at it more closely, and filtering it if they need to. So, and we get emails from them when that happens, so like I said, for a while, we were getting two a day for a while. But again, those weren't full-blown DDoS attacks, we probably had a handful of those CIs.
Excellent. Any other questions? Anybody online? So, Ryan? I just wondered if you had any questions for Mr. Piper?
I couldn't hear too much of it, so.
Fair enough.
It's okay.
So, you're in communication with other?
No questions. I couldn't hear much either.
Thanks, Julie. Derek, so you're in communication with other districts and, you know, these forums and whatnot. What types of attacks are other districts seeing? As schools become smarter and put the infrastructure in place to prevent, you know, the DDoS attacks, are they moving to other types of attacks to get around that?
So again, the two biggest ones are the DDoS. I know Norwich has had one two weeks ago, and it was very similar to ours. They were totally shut down, they had to scramble. They also put Comcast in play. And again, ransomware, I've read a bunch of ransomwares. I think it was Springfield had a big ransomware attack sometime this year. Get the other one, I read about, but it's mostly ransomware and DDoS, because those are the most potent, if you will, phishing and that sort of stuff, it is bad. Malware is a big thing, so we're also looking at that, especially with the BYOD program here. You know, how do we make sure that malware's not coming into the building? How do we mitigate the risk from that? Those are some of the big ones.
What's our vulnerability to ransomware?
Hate to say this on camera, but I feel it's very, very low. Again, our Power School server with our firewall and everything else is pretty secure as well. With ransomware, the big thing is, if you don't have a way to get the data back, that's where you're stuck. If you have good backups, then it's really not that big of a deal. Sometimes, you know, people will do ransomware and say they're going to publish the data, but again, the type of data we have isn't, like, financial data, things like that, social security numbers. But with our backup and our, you know, Power School disaster recovery that we have with them, that we purchase every year, I feel we're in a good place there.
Good.
And again, that's probably our most sensitive data, is our Power School.
Thank you for the presentation and all the hard work you've been doing, you know, going back since March, really, giving everything set up for all the extra, you know, Wi-Fi demands, and then the DDoS attacks, and you and your team are doing a great job, and we appreciate it.
Yeah, so is the team, we're a good team. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Derek.
Thanks, Derek.
If I can just done that, and probably more of a question to Dr. Flanagan, but I'm assuming that we're going to budget for the Comcast at the elementary school and start that process?
Yes, yeah, we're going to get into that a little bit later to talk about real high level. We're not there with numbers yet, but we are, conceptually, we're having these conversations, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent. AB, TPS Phase Two reopening proposal?
Yep. So, Mr. Chair, I'll jump in, we'll go to the first one. I think before we start talking about Phase Two, I just want to provide the committee with an update about Phase One, which began February 1st. As you know, part of Phase One was increased time for our Bridges Program, so we have students in all three schools that are back five days a week. This has provided a lot of flexibility at the elementary school for some of our service providers. I had the opportunity to visit the classrooms today, and then it was, the teachers were excited to have the kids back. I don't know how excited some of the kids were to be back five days a week, but it's still, it's good for their development and their learning, so that was a good thing to see. Additionally, we know we're going to identify some pre-K families to increase their learning experience. About a third of our pre-K population, we've expanded service opportunities for them as well, so that's going very well. And all along, continuing throughout the year, our TPS administration has looked at students, identified students that need to come to school more frequently for one reason or another. They're not in any particular boat or category, just kids that need to be in school more often, so we've been doing that readily. So Phase One has gone very well. So let's talk about Phase Two, and we'll begin with where we always begin, our learning model drivers. And I think the one we want to highlight here is number two. We will continue to follow the recommendations of professionals and experts, as detailed in both the CDC and DESI guidelines. We continue to lean on that, we continue to follow that as we have from day one. Our primary goal, as it has been all along, is to look at context and data as it applies to Tinsborough and make local decisions that benefit our students. This is today's dashboard, and nothing has changed since 5:54 this morning. We have one active case in our district right now at the high school. As we look at our community, and we look at the positivity rate, you will see, and I just wanted to see, I wanted to show the trend, because the trend's something we're going to speak about, but you can see in November 12th, that was the last time we were in the yellow, we're 4.72%, we had 38 positive cases. You can see throughout Thanksgiving and the month of December, how the positivity rate and the positive cases climbed. And you can see now, February 4th, how we're on the way down. We're trending in the right direction. Locally, as a state and as a country right now, it appears we're all going in the right direction, which is great. I don't know what the numbers are going to be exactly tomorrow, but we anticipate that we will be certainly lower than 6.41%. That's the goal for tomorrow, and I believe that's going to be a little bit lower than that. So again, we're going to continue in the right direction, we hope. Go to the next one.
So, Mike, just real quick. As of last Thursday, when the 6.41% came out, that's seven consecutive weeks of improving positivity rates.
Correct.
So that's a really good run.
It's a great run, it's a great one, we just need to keep it going. So we always come to this slide, and basically, when we get to this slide, I always talk about the red lettering, because that's where we are. Schools in red communities should be implementing hybrid models, which we have, while maximizing in-person learning opportunities for high-need students, which we do. Tonight, I want to draw your attention to the line above it. This is the other marker by Department of Elementary in Massachusetts, based on the metrics I put out in the bi-weekly report, or the weekly reports, excuse me, from our DPH. Districts and schools and communities designated gray, green, or yellow are expected to have students learning fully in person, if feasible. So that's why we're talking about Phase Two, because I believe we're going to trend to be in the yellow as a community, I hope, within the next few weeks. So we need to talk about what does it look like for increased in-person learning time in the Tinsborough Public Schools. Additionally, you know that in the news, the director of the CDC has said that teachers do not necessarily need a vaccine to open schools. It should be prioritized, but it's not a prerequisite, prerequisite, that's the difference, right? And if you think about that, we were talking about reopening schools in August before the development of the vaccine. We were hopeful it was coming, it was always on the horizon, and there was a time of coming, but we don't necessarily need a vaccine shot in arm to increase our in-person learning time. The other thing that you'll see on here is that the CDC is going to update school reopening guidance, and my understanding is that's anticipated for this Friday. We will have updated guidance from the CDC about school reopenings. Next slide. So as we think about moving towards in-person learning, if we can go back as a committee, I remember it was early November, and this committee, our numbers were pretty good, and this committee said, how do we get kids back more? So at that point, we began to explore what increased in-person learning looked like. How do we bring more students back into the schools? And at that point, we began early discussions of hybrid plus, and increased learning time for K-1 beginning on January 4th. If you remember, that was our goal, that's what we shoot for, January 4th. But then, our numbers as a town and a school district started to rise, they started to spike, and they started to explode. And at that point, much like we said all along, we're going to follow the data, we're going to follow, put context to the school system, and we're going to make the best-informed decisions for the kids at that time. So if we go to the next slide. Again, let's just go back to that. Early November, we were talking about coming back more in person, and then you can see where our numbers begin to trend. It was illogical to have the conversation about bringing kids back into school, when at one point, we were in the 14, 14.49%, we were probably top 10 in the state for positivity rate as a community. Didn't make sense to have the conversation at that point to bring kids back, because the community spirit wasn't great. So we'll go to the next slide. Additionally, we go back to August, and I think, I think what we're trying to say is our thinking has evolved in this since August. We're certainly not in the same place as we were then. One of the issues in August that we learned of, or that we knew about, was transportation. Transportation advisory for DESI at the time was, one student per bench seat, alternating seats. Okay, so our buses were capped at about 23 students. Well, on December 2nd, DESI sponsored a webinar with Professor Joseph Allen, Joseph Allen, who is chairman of School Public Health at Harvard University. And Professor Allen performed a ventilation study on buses, and he had three scenarios. The first scenario was a bus that was running, but stopped with windows closed and just a recirculating fan running. And Professor Allen noticed that in the course of an hour, there was 1.8 air changes per hour, and we're going to talk about that in a minute, about 1.8 air changes per hour. So they performed another study. If we keep the windows closed, and we run a typical bus route, 20 to 30 minutes, and we turn on the fresh air fan of the bus, that produced 4.3 air changes per hour. So then he performed a third study, and he said if we open the windows on a bus, and we do the same bus loop 20 to 30 minutes, with just the windows open a little bit, it produced 20.95% air changes per hour in the front of the bus, 29.61 air changes per hour in the middle of the bus, and 42.81 air changes per hour in the back of the bus. So let's go to the next slide. So why is that important? ASHRAY. ASHRAY, and I have to, like Derek, I have to look at the name and read the name to you because it's a long extension, the American Society of Heating, Refrigeration, and Air Conditioning Engineers. This is the gold standard. They set the expectation for what proper ventilation should be in a confined space in a public facility. So ASHRAY recommends four to six air changes per hour for general public spaces in a building where there is not a need to exhaust chemicals, dust, or gas, example, a typical classroom. If you recall back in August, we were scrambling... If you recall back in August, we were scrambling, because we had a train report that said we need to increase air changes per hour at the middle school. So every classroom at the middle school now has air purifier, air, help air filters and purification, as well as recommendation to keep windows open whenever possible. So, we had this information, we got the air purifiers, and then this information about transportation was hosted by DESI on a webinar on December 2nd, 2020. If you go back to the slides I showed you, you know, on December 2nd, 2020, our numbers were around about 13 percent positivity in town. So the conversation about increasing students on transportation was moot at that point, because we already had conversations about potential remote learning at that point. We're following the context, we're following the data. So let's go to the next slide. So we know we want to be acceptable ventilation in general area between four and six air changes per hour. If we go back to the study and the numbers, we can see that just by opening those windows minimally across the bus, yes, the ride will be cold, yes, it will be cold, but the air change that we will get, according to Dr. Allen, Professor Allen, excuse me, makes it acceptable to put kids with masks three feet apart on a bus. So two kids on a bench seat with a mask for the entire ride, knowing that they're going to get 20 to 40 air changes per hour on a 20 to 30 minute ride. Does that apply to every ride in Tinsborough? No. I live the first point possible from the North Road campus, it might be a 35 a night. But you get where we're going with this. So the air change per hour is something that, this is a game changer in terms of transportation. Again, it was brought to us December 2nd, a moot point at that point in time, but now that we're starting to have these conversations about increased in-person learning, this is a, this is a study that we can lean on to change our practices. Additionally, I think we're going to get something formal from DESI in the next few weeks about transportation. So the next slide. So tonight, I present to you our Phase Two proposal to increase in-person learning time in our district. And the proposal says this, I'm asking the committee, hopefully at the end, to vote on the proposal in its entirety, but we would like, February 26th, Friday, February 26th, a week after vacation, we would like for that to be a no-school day. And on that day, we'd like to provide the teachers at the Tinsborough Elementary School the opportunity to plan and prepare for increased in-person learning, and we'd like to provide the teachers on the North Road campus with teacher-directed professional development, so that they can have some quality time together as a department. The reason we need this time is so that on the following Monday, March 1, we want to bring back our kindergarten, grade one and grade two to classrooms five days a week. The spacing in the classroom will be six feet mouth-to-mouth, four feet head-to-head. So six side-to-side, four front-to-back. By doing this, by doing this, we feel as though we can fit most of our kids back that want to come, and we're going to look at all the spaces and maximize the space in that school. So we want to go five days a week for kindergarten, grade one and grade two, beginning March 1st. On March 1st, we also want to roll out hybrid plus for grades six to 12. Hybrid plus is in-person learning on Wednesdays. Week one will be the Lakeview cohort, week two, it'll be the Winslow cohort. So every other Wednesday, the kids are getting additional day per week in school. Grades three, four, and five will have no change until March 15th. On March 15th, as you know, we're on a trimester schedule here at Tinsborough. That's the beginning of our third trimester. On March 15th, we want to increase grades three, four, and five to five days a week in-person learning, again, six feet side-to-side, four feet front-to-back. We'll go to the next slide. Considerations. To do this and make this happen, we need to fully understand what choices our parents will make regarding the learning model. We need to understand the most accurate numbers for transportation and bus seats. Additionally, I would also put a message out to the community that we are going to encourage parents, if at all possible, at the elementary school, please drive your children to school. Again, just another mitigation factor, keep the numbers down on buses. Grades K to 2, right now, in our planning stages, fully remote students will be reassigned to a dedicated, fully remote teacher. So our K-1 and 2 teachers who are in person will teach the students in person in front of them. Remote students will be taught by a dedicated remote teacher. We believe that's better for both groups of kids.
Dr. Flanagan, that dedicated remote teacher, is that a Tinsborough teacher, or is that an employee of the Tinsborough Public Schools?
So great question. It's either a current or recently hired employee of the Tinsborough Public Schools, yes. Yes, it's not a service or else, yeah. Grades three to five, right now, fully remote students will attend in the same model that they're in right now, the concurrent model at this time. Again, we're exploring that. Nothing is that system. We need to understand where the numbers are, where the numbers are going to go, and come back on February 23rd to this committee with a definitive plan. Additionally, we will continue to work with the TTA leadership and the billing administration to explore what in-person looks, what learning looks like for grades six through 12 moving forward. And I, and I have to stop here. The reason we can, we can do this is because of the collaboration and cooperation of the Tinsborough Teachers Association. Our teachers are great, they're phenomenal, they want these kids back, and I am very proud of the weekly meetings Dr. Branca and I have with Shelby Gov. and Jason Lewis to talk things through. We talk to each other every single week about what's going on. That's why we're in a position where we can do this. It's not what you read in the paper that they're fighting us every step, that's not the case. Our teachers want the kids back, and they work with us, and we have a great relationship. And the final pull-up point on this bullet is we will continue to encourage our parents to drive kids, I already said that. So if we go to the next slide. I think the most important thing people need to understand, if we bring our kids back five days a week, at any point, if we see a classroom, a cluster, a grade, a wing, a school start to go, and the numbers start to rise, I have the ability to immediately pause that and change the learning model. That gives us time to call an emergency meeting and come back and have a more formal discussion about changing the learning model. We are not going to do this, put it in a drawer, and come back in three weeks and make a decision about it. We'll be watching this like a hawk every single day to ensure that our numbers stay on the right trajectory. If we start to see a spike or climb, we will take action, much like we have in the past. But I want parents to know, this isn't a decision that we're making on March 13th, and we'll talk about it, you know, in the summer for next year. That's not the case. We will watch this daily to make sure that our kids are safe, and if we need to put the brakes on anything, we will. And the brakes may be, we're going to fully remote learning, or we're going to go to hybrid, but we need to see what happens. So I just presented a lot of information to you folks. So at this time, happy to answer any questions about more in-person learning.
I think this is great stuff, Mike. Thank you to you, you know, your team, TTA. So one thing, there's a two-week gap between bringing back K-1 and 2 and the rest of the elementary school. What's the reason for that two weeks?
So I think, great, grades three and four and five, you know, they're, they're doing assessments for kids, it's, they want a clean break at the trimester. I think that makes more sense, it's more logical. I think our youngest learners, we, we want to get them back. We've been talking since September that our youngest kids need to get off screens. So I, I don't think it's, it makes any sense to delay that for two weeks for grades and assessment. For grades three, four, and five, our kids are doing a little bit better in three, four, and five, so it makes sense to say, let's do a clean break at the end of trimester two, so we can have a clean start of trimester three for them. Additionally, it also gives us an opportunity to watch our systems and operations in place as we move to five days a week learning. So if we see that we need to modify anything before we increase it by three more grades, we can have that conversation, assess where we are at that point, and, and make any modifications to our operational procedures.
Excellent. Now, what about the middle school and the high school? I know those buildings are tighter.
They are.
Are we looking at bringing those students back?
So, so we began the conversations this morning with Shelby and Jason. We need to look at it. I mean, so let's, let's, let's be honest, the middle school, the classrooms are small, the kids are bigger, the furniture's bigger. So we're going to be really doing a deep dive on what that could potentially look like for potentially a six-by-four at both the middle school and the high school. We started, we started in fairness with the elementary school. Developmentally, that's the most appropriate place to start. And if you recall, back in November, when the committee wanted to explore hybrid plus, we already started with K-1 and potentially two back then. So some of the groundwork had already been done at that point. So Mrs. Cavanagh and her team had been all straight, they expanded that groundwork, and they've done a phenomenal job, put an incredible amount of work and time at the elementary school. So now it's Mr. Ogden and Mr. Paul's turn to put an incredible amount of time and effort to see what increased learning looks like on this campus.
Now, are those principles working with each other? So is there a potential to perhaps shift a grade from one building to another?
Yes, there absolutely is. There absolutely is. We're looking at every square inch of our, our school footprint to say, how do we maximize the, the physical plant that we have to get kids back? Our goal is to get kids back five days a week. So if you have to convert a gym into two or three classrooms, we'll do that.
We're looking at programming, too. So we're looking at options about programming, particularly in Unified Arts and Specials, is there shared space, or can, can they relocate from one school to the other, or can we combine classes at the middle school in certain classrooms? Not, not academic classes, but Unified Arts where it's more appropriate. So we're looking at programming and space all at the same time.
You know, we don't want to disturb our students' learning environment, we don't want, we don't want to blow things up for a second, blowing things up. It needs to be logical, it needs to make sense. So, so we need to really dive into this over the next week to see where we are. So my hope is to come back, my hope is to get preliminary approval on this, so that we can begin to plan for what increased in-person learning looks like for K to 5, and give our middle and high school administration the opportunity to really kind of start to explore what it looks like. Additionally, the planning at the elementary school is going to be different in that six-to-four feet, that might have some parents saying, I'm not comfortable with more kids, I'm going to switch to remote. Still an option. It might have remote parents saying, you know what, I like where the numbers are, I'm going to push my kid in, and have the option to select that. Still an option. The only thing that's not an option is hybrid. Hybrid is not an option if we accept this model. You're either an in-person student or a remote student.
Excellent.
Dr. Flanagan, can you explain what would happen in the event that there is a positive case in the classroom in the four-by-six model? How does the close contact get determined?
Right, great question. So it's different now, right? Because right now, today, we're six-by-six. So in a classroom, there are no close contacts. If we go to six-by-four and a student is test positive, there could be a potential close contact from somebody in the seat behind them or the seat in front of them. So that would change the operations and how, who would be defined as close contact.
And then talking on the four-by-six model, is the four-by-six a, four-by-six for students, or is, are the teachers in a four-by-six as well?
Great question. Six-by-four, four students. Teachers will always have minimally six feet away from students to protect our, our teaching staff, always, minimally.
Sure, and then in the event that we have a student that's deemed a close contact, and maybe they have to be out of school for a, a short period of time until they get their test results, how does that remote learning model work for them?
Yeah, so they would not be reassigned to the remote learning teacher. The teacher would have to go concurrent, like they are right now for that student. So all these students that are fully remote would go potentially to a new teacher, again, K-2 right now. But if a student in a, in a, in a fifth grade classroom were deemed a close contact, and they had Mr. Lewis as, as their teacher, Mr. Lewis would still be their teacher concurrently, teaching the classroom, yeah, much like he does right now, five days, four days a week.
Great, thank you.
I'm assuming Whitson's and Dean would be giving a heads up, and they'd be willing to support this, you know, when, when we make the change?
Yes, Mr. Messina's already had preliminary conversations with both Whitson's and Dean. Anything to add, Mr. Messina?
No. I'm being, I'm being emailed both of them right now.
If I may, Mr. Chair, the contact tracing with the cohorts right now separating the kids, is that going to affect the family? As far as?
We have a child going five days a week kindergarten through death. I'm just thinking of, from a cohort standpoint, is that going to affect our cohorts and affect anything?
So, so to, to that point, you know, one of the things with cohort is, you know, I think the definition might modify a little bit, right? Cohort now, we need to know where the student is, who the student's come in contact with throughout the day. Picture the old high school, the old high school model, right? A kid could be in contact with multiple kids during the day. Right now, we're going to be strategic in terms of where we assign kids, how they travel, who they're with, and we're going to always know what their cohort will be. We still won't have 300 kids in a cafeteria. They'll still eat lunches in their classroom, they'll still go to their specials together as a class, they'll still take their mask breaks together as a class. Recession will still be class-based. So, so we're not going to say all other mitigation strategies are gone. All other mitigation strategies are still in place. Nothing has changed except the six-by-four. Still have to wear masks, you know, and all, and all the other FISA rules, and the ban rules, those are all in place. So as long as we can identify it and track it and know it, that's redeeming cohort. I don't know if I answered, of course, I hope it did, yeah.
Mike Moran, Julie Gustucci, any questions from you folks?
I don't have any questions at this time.
Thanks, Mike.
I'm all set, thank you.
Thanks, Julie.
I'm all set, thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
Dr. Flanagan, again, I had a couple of questions. I know in the past, we've definitely heard from some teachers that were concerned around having Wednesday as a planning day, and also, what's also been the day that the schools have been deep cleaned when everybody's remote. Have, have those concerns been somewhat mitigated with some of the, the go-forward plan, and also what happens with that deep cleaning day?
Yeah, so, so the deep cleaning, that's a great, great question. That was, that was August thinking. Like the deep cleaning was August thinking, that's when, that's when we weren't passing papers out to kids, because we thought it was transmission through high-touch areas, right? Once it became an aerosol, there was more concern about ventilation. Right now, right now, deep cleaning is, is far down the list, particularly when it comes to social, emotional wellness of kids. Social, emotional wellness of kids has moved all the way up the list. So we're going to, we're going to value that in those five days more than deep cleaning. That being said, we will continue to clean, we'll continue to keep, keep our, our, our schools as clean as possible. We have no problem paying our custodians overtime on the weekend to make sure that they're doing everything that they need to, that they couldn't get done on a Wednesday and our students are back. But quite honestly, I feel as though we're, we're fully staffed, I feel like we're in a good position. I, I think our schools are clean, I think, you know, the hand washing, that's not going away. Wetting down surfaces between, between students, that's not going away. So I think we're less concerned about the high touch and more concerned about the social, emotional, which is why we're making this push for five days, so.
And when it comes to the Wednesday, particularly at the elementary school, because that's where we're focusing right now, yeah, I think what you have heard from us is they were doing business a certain way to meet the needs of certain populations of kids, or to meet around instructional needs or student needs on the Wednesday. They have been working with their counseling team, with their related service providers, and with some of the regular teachers to make sure that all of that work can continue to happen. It just won't happen in the way it was happening on the Wednesday. It'll be shifted, dare I say, more like a regular school day, and they'll, they'll, they'll reallocate the time and locations for that work.
And then the last question is just where, you know, some, where the spacing is going from six-by-six to six-by-four, some parents may not be comfortable with that. Is there going to be a survey out to parents to see if anyone's going to be wanting to change to a remote situation, or is that going to be?
Yeah, no, great question. So, so the, the plan would be, you know, if the committee supports this tonight, I will communicate with the staff tonight about the committee decision. We have a letter all teed up, ready to go tomorrow morning, very early, at 7:30, with a complete detailed list of what we talked about tonight, slides that explain the three different models potentially, and that'll be followed up by a questionnaire from the elementary school, which will say, based on that letter and the information and the direction of the school committee, you can either choose in-person or remote, and will you drive, will you require transportation, or can you drive your child to school? So that's all teed up for tomorrow morning. And the goal would be that, you know, if the committee supports this tonight, we implore parents to please fill that out as soon as possible, because that's really going to make an, a, a difference on how we schedule our kids and what staffing patterns we'll need, as well as how we assign physical spaces within the building.
And it's important to note that everybody gets a clean slate, which is why we want everybody to bring it back, that we're not making any assumption that you're in one model and now you're staying or leaving that model. So it's going to be really incumbent upon the parent base to make sure everybody does that in a timely manner to help Principal Cavanagh and her staff get moving.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I do want to just touch on the six through 12. I know that that's not as much of the focus right now, that we're really focusing on the elementary school at the moment, but the elementary school, you were mentioning that, you know, we had made that request back in November to start looking at how we can bring them back more in person, and the work continued behind the scenes even as the town numbers increased. So we had quite the lead time to get here for the elementary school. I'm just concerned, I don't want to take that long a lead time to get there for the high school and the middle school, and are we going to be able to accelerate that research?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Yes. My hope is to come back on the 23rd with some ideas of what we can do and how we can do it.
Okay.
So.
We also want to see, you know, we have no idea what the CDC guidance is going to say on Friday, so we want to see what that says because that could certainly impact this conversation. You know, I think we're looking for permission tonight to say this is what we want to do and if we can do it, great. But we need to start the work on this more so. High school and middle school, I don't see as much changing of teachers or assignments or anything. It's really fine in the physical space for them.
I would ask that getting the middle school and high school back becomes, you know, a huge priority. You know, the committee was willing to have emergency meetings, you know, to shift the learning model in spite of the numbers, you know, to go full remote. We should have that same willingness to come together, you know, off schedule to change the learning model if it means we can get the kids back sooner. So when you guys are ready with that plan, you know, and assuming the town numbers continue, you know, I'd be willing to call a meeting so we can make a change and not wait for a meeting that's already on the calendar.
Sure, absolutely. I mean, we've had preliminary conversations with Mr. Ogden, Mr. Paul saying, "Hey, this is coming down the pike," just so you know, you know, we need to start thinking about it for the middle school and high school as well.
The other point I'd say.
As well as union leadership, the TTA.
Right.
Just today.
If, you know, if one school comes in sooner than the other, you know, then I would say we move in that direction. You know, so I know middle school's tight, right? If we can solve the high school problem first, let's not wait on the middle school, let's get the high school get through. Or vice versa, you know, whichever problem we solve first.
Sure, sure.
If I may, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to accept Phase 2 reopening as written.
I'll second that motion.
Discussion. This requires a roll call vote. Mr. Mall?
In favor.
Mr. Moran?
Sorry, couldn't you repeat that?
Roll call vote. Are you in favor or not in favor of the motion?
And what is the motion?
The motion is to accept the Phase 2 proposal as outlined by Dr. Flanagan in his presentation.
I'm in favor.
Thank you. Julie?
I'm in favor.
Thank you. I'm in favor.
I'm in favor.
In favor.
In favor.
That carries 7-0-0.
Thank you, everyone. Also, just so everyone knows, the notification will go to the staff tonight, parents first thing tomorrow morning, and then elementary parents will get another notification from Mrs. Cavanagh that will require parent action. So please fill that out as soon as you can. Thank you very much.
Just one more point that I want to make. For those parents who have kids that sort of are in both groups, the K through 2 and the 3 through 5, you know, we're willing to work with you during the transition period too.
Yes, so if you have a first grader and a fourth grader and you are going to drive your first grader to school, you know, we will certainly provide you enough time to get home so your fourth grader can log on so you don't have to leave your fourth grader at home by themselves. Do not worry about that. What's more important now, we have parents driving kids to school and we'll adjust accordingly. We've already had that conversation with Mrs. Cavanagh, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to make that point. I want teachers, parents stressed.
No, no stress, no stress. Flexibility, that's what we'll learn this year.
Very true. All right. New business, FY22 budget introduction. Dr. Flanagan?
So FY22 budget process. So it's ironic that we're sitting here in early February, almost mid-February, and we haven't really presented any numbers yet. I think everything is delayed at this point. Certainly, the governor's budget came out later than normal, we have no idea. We have preliminary numbers from the state, we have no idea exactly where the budget's going to land. There's talk about $1.9 trillion relief from the federal government. Some of that is supposed to be earmarked for communities and towns. Whether any of that gets the things about, who knows? But in conversation with Town Minister Hanson just recently, just two days ago, you know, we're at a very late process right now. What we've done behind the scenes though, just so the committee is aware, you know, from January to February, we've met with our school leadership team and we focused on three questions. One, how we maximize scheduling and current assignments to return to a pre-COVID operational structure at your school. Two, what financial considerations need to be made to address changing dynamics, expectations and initiatives within your school and or department. And three, what staffing, technology or supply material considerations need to be made for FY22. So our building principals and our central office personnel have started us at a high level. They report all this information back to Mr. Messina and I, and then we put some numbers on it. And then we begin to come together as a group and have a conversation about what are our top priorities for this year, what's it going to cost us potentially from expense side to roll the budget over? And we really kind of keep it high level at this point. Not knowing potentially what the town budget's going to be, not knowing where we're going yet, it doesn't make sense to put together a 30,000-foot view just yet. So in conversations with Mr. Messina and I, we're going to work through the budget subcommittee, have further conversations about this, and our goal is to come back on March 9th with that initial pass at the budget. As you recall, when we originally rolled out the budget timeline in, I think it was the first meeting in January, even then, they talked about a town meeting that was still a month and a half later than it usually is. So everything's pushed out a little bit. So we're beginning the process now, we've had our conversations, and I think, Mr. Messina jumping to any point, but I think one of the biggest challenges we're having is what is next year going to look like? Julie, you want to speak to that at all?
Always, given an opportunity to speak, I have no problem speaking on budget. Certainly, as the superintendent mentioned, we don't know what it's going to look like opening schools in the fall. We're hopeful, but we have to be a little pragmatic in looking at it. Certainly, maybe it's this year looking at two different styles of budget as we go through this. And rather than trying to hone into a number, it gets more and more difficult when at a town meeting, we have to ask the voters for a budget. So we sort of have that two-headed monster trying to get combined into one number to give to the voters to vote on our budget. So challenges abound. We did have our first budget committee meeting two weeks ago. We were scheduled to have a follow-up tonight, which we had to move thanks to the snow. But a number of challenges that we'll work through. And, you know, what we do know is, you know, kids will be looking to be educated in some way, shape or form in late August, early September, and we'll be there for them.
That's the best way to say it, right? The doors are open no matter what. Figure it out.
True.
That's it for budget, that's again, real high level, but everything's delayed right now.
All right.
So we need to jump off the 9B.
All right, 9B, policy action. This is a fun one. So we have several motions tonight in regards to policies. I'm going to seek a motion to submit the following policies as reaffirms. 5.3 locker assignment inspection, 5.5 use of alcohol detection devices, 5.16 progress reports, 5.20 field chaperones, 5.21 state mandated testing, 5.24 consent and release form for all voluntary activities, 5.26 student enrollment residency, and 5.28 early release of high school seniors.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Discussion. Roll call. Mr. Mall?
In favor.
Mr. Moran?
In favor.
Ms. Gostucci?
In favor.
I'm in favor.
I'm in favor.
In favor.
In favor.
That carries 7-0-0. I will now seek a motion to remove the following policies. These policies have been rolled into other policies, so they're obsolete at this point. 5.2 out-of-state tuition students, 5.10 possession of dangerous weapons or controlled substances and physical assault on school personnel, 5.11 drug abuse, 5.14 suspension, 5.23 threats of or acts of harm, and 5.25 student records release access for non-custodial parents.
I'll make that motion.
I will second it.
Discussion. Mr. Mall?
In favor.
Mr. Moran?
In favor.
Ms. Gostucci?
In favor.
I'm in favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
That carries 7-0-0. And our final motion, I will seek a motion to submit the following policies as a first read. 2.2 use of tobacco and/or tobacco products, 4.1 cancellation, delay, opening, unscheduled early release, 4.3 maintenance of student records, 5.1 acceptable dress, 5.4 possession of alcohol, 5.7 cultural exchange students, 5.12 student daily attendance, and 5.15 student conduct.
I'll make that motion.
I will second it.
Discussion. Mr. Mall?
In favor.
Mr. Moran?
In favor.
Ms. Gostucci?
I'm in favor.
I'm in favor.
In favor.
In favor.
That carries 7-0-0. Thank you, Dr. Branko, for all the work you've gone into these. We've done a lot of work over the years prior to stagger these, so we wouldn't have patches like this. With COVID last year, we got behind, so we're going to work to, you know, re-stagger these as we move forward, but definitely had some house cleaning to do tonight. Finance, Mr. Messina.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. 14 bill warrants were presented to the committee tonight. I do have them back, all approved. As always, in your drive is the list of warrant numbers, accounts and amounts. For signing of payroll, in your drive, you'll see the last two payroll lines, the payroll of January 18th and the payroll of February 1st with their amounts. And that is it for finance.
Thank you. School committee discussion. Natalie?
I'm all set, thank you.
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Mr. Moran?
I wish I could have got paid to do the study that seemed pretty obvious with the windows being down and the air change, but I just thought it was interesting. I really don't have much to add tonight. I do really want the schools to open up as soon as possible. I do hear that parents, there's a lot of concern, parents just want their kids to get back to school full-time. That's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Gostucci?
I agree with Mike Moran and have nothing else to say.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Messina?
I'm all set tonight, thank you.
All set, thank you.
I'd like to thank Dr. Piper. We have not been.
He's smart enough.
Derek for coming out this evening and presenting, thank you for that information and all the work that you and your group do on a daily basis to keep us up and running, so we appreciate it, sure. And thank you to Dr. Flanagan and Dr. Branko and your group for everything, all the work you put in to getting us to reopen and getting our kids back to school. That's been a priority of this committee since March. So thank you and to the TTA for being willing to work with us when we see on other, we see on news networks and things, a lot of school districts that are not working with their, with their teacher group and ours have always been very good to us, so thank you to all of them and to our teachers for being willing to come back. Is that it?
I'm, everything Tony just said, I guess. So really happy to see our younger learners come back and excited to see what the administration has to put in front of us as soon as it's available for 6 through 12. As far as families are concerned, you know, if you can please reply to the communication that will be coming out as soon as possible so that we can execute on bringing these kids back, that would be really helpful. And thank you to the community for keeping these numbers down. It's a community effort to get these kids back and so thank you to the community for that. And that's all.
Just I want to reiterate, and Natalie mentioned that there was a big school building committee meeting tomorrow night. Let me rephrase that, it's not a school building committee meeting, it's a community forum about the TMS school building project. So if you have the opportunity, the Zoom link's available on our webpages, it's all on social media, from 6 to 8 tomorrow night. It's kind of an inside look as to where we are. It's an opportunity for community members to have some input into the process as well. So if you have nothing to do from 6 to 8 tomorrow night, I would suggest you log in to see what's happening with the school building project at TMS.
Thank you.